Five o'clock on Tuesday, 5 August 2014. I'd like to call the Village of North Hudson a regular board trustees meeting to order. And I have a invocation. Lord, our nation needs your guidance and direction. We humbly ask that your spirit intercede with the leaders of the nation, giving them the wisdom to make decisions that will honor you. We pray fervently for peace both here and abroad. Let us live with reverence for you and with peace in our hearts for our fellow man. We know that this is your desire. May we always remember that you are God and Savior. Uh, roll call.
Pastor Anderson?
Right.
Ted?
Here.
O'Brien Bergland?
Here.
Brody? Absent. Stanford's absent. President Mecklen?
Here.
Trustee Zappa?
Here.
I guess we do have quorums. We can continue. Uh, second item in the agenda, review of an approved minutes from the regular board meeting of one July 2014.
Stan, may I move to approve minutes from the regular board meeting of July 1, 2014?
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion cares. Uh, comments from the floor opting for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities either on or not on today's agenda. And uh, let's see, everybody here is on the agenda. So we will uh, move on to item four. Welcome, Daryl. I saw it coming up. There it is. Okay, item number five, oh no, item number four, amended class B, carrying class B liquor license for extended premises seasons tavern, August 15 through 17, 2014, approval requested.
Stan, may I move that the class B slash class B referral license for sale of fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquors for seasons tavern be temporarily amended for an event taking place Saturday, August 16, 2014, from 8:00 a.m. until midnight with the following conditions. One, area outside a building to be completely enclosed with fence and the extended premises accessed only from the single, from a single access point. Two, use of alcohol shall remain within the building or fenced in area per the establishment's liquor license. Three, use of an outside area only with specific permission of village board for requested date and time. Four, owner to provide equal amount of adjacent substitute off-street parking while parking lot areas fenced during the time of event. Five, owner to be responsible for DJ slash music volume. Six, all outside, music to end no later than 10:00 p.m.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Colleen. Further discussion? If there's any questions, Brad is here if there was any questions on this, but it's uh, same that we've done for, I believe, since you've been there, so there's no changes. So uh, uh, all in favor of extending the extended premises use for uh, Seasons Tavern on uh, through uh, per request, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Deal. Okay. Number five, adoption of special, final special assessment report for sanitary sewer and water main improvements for the shopyards. Everybody should have the engineer's report and uh, I guess Kevin, you might as well, if you want to give us a small overview, please?
I did have some of the highlights of the report. As you're aware, everything's been finalized out for the shopyards project. Final lift of asphalt and restoration of the punch list items have been completed. So from there, we have generated the final special assessment report. We have a copy in front of you. Page number two, so basically what we're looking at special assessing is 50% of this access road, street reconstruction that was done down there. As you're aware, the sanitary sewer and the water main was picked up since it was a replacement. Sinking funds ended up picking up that cost. So those will be funded all by the village. Page number four, we have, gives you the assessment district. We have nine parcels that are affected as part of the project. None of those parcels, there was no changes in ownership. So those did stay the same as what the preliminary assessment report was. As you can see, the village does have one parcel of land down there. So they are cost sharing into the, into the access road also. From there, so page number five, right at the top, gives you the breakdown of where the cost came in between the sanitary sewer, the water main, um, access road, and the engineering and admin for a total project cost of a little over $400,000. When you compare that to what we had in the preliminary assessment report, that was around $460,000. So overall, it looks like it came in about $56,000 less than what we were originally anticipating. And a lot of that was because, you know, we did have quite a few people that did bid on the project, so we got some really good numbers. Um, and then the overall construction costs came in under, um, when you look at the original contract where the final numbers came out, so. So page number six, when you look at the uh, the street reconstruct, um, again, 50% is picked up by the village, 50% by the property owners. It looks like we're going to be assessing around $50,000 for those nine different parcels. So when you take the $50,000 divided by nine, it comes out on the next page, page number seven, of a little under $5,500 per parcel. When you compare that to the prelimi- uh, preliminary assessment report, we were anticipating 7150 per parcel. So it looks like it's going to be a difference of right around $1,700 less, first piece. So when you look at that dollar amount, the, right around that $5,500 mark, if you go to page number six, that would allow the individuals to pay that back over an eight-year period, which amounts to right around $700 per year, if they choose to choose that option. Um, and then you get into appendix A, it's all the itemized, and that's where all the numbers came in as part of the bid for the final numbers. And then, um, appendix B is the public hearing that we went through as part of the preliminary assessment report and then the preliminary resolution. So that's, that's where we came out at, um, as, as part of the project. Going to have Gloria, going to give them, you know, how they can pay that back, either they can pay it back right away. You want to step in and just summarize?
Sure. They'll have the option, three options. One is to bring it in before it goes on the tax roll. Two, have the whole amount on the tax roll. Or three, have it divided up over the eight years, for eight years on the tax roll. And that's up to them to decide which way they want to do it.
That's lettered, we've sent out or will be sending out for pending approval?
Yep. Right.
Okay.
Is there a difference between if they paid up all, or less than if they paid over seven years?
Interest.
Yeah.
And it's um, one and a half percent higher than what we got it for at the bank. So it just covers administration of the loans.
Do you need two motions on this? One for the pay approval and one for the resolution?
Uh, no, you approve the uh, Melissa, I'm going to ask you, you read the statute recently as far as the pay approval, why we don't really have to have a separate motion because it was already approved when they approved the preliminary resolution?
Preliminary resolution, the pay requests are in there. And then it's in the claims.
The notated memo from Cedar was, uh, recommend approval, pay request number three. So I didn't know if that needed to be broken out.
It's in the claims.
Okay. So we just need to move approval of resolution number 2014 dash 06?
And then just the approval of the special assessment report.
I'll move to approve the special assessments portion of the uh, shopyard sanitary sewer and water main improvements project.
Second. Thank you, Mark. Second. Daryl?
Second.
Thank you, Daryl. Uh, any further discussion? Let's start with Ted.
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you. Do you all have to do this resolution on six?
We just did that. That's what.
So those are combined.
I don't know. Melissa, the question?
Oh, it's just the approval.
Okay, yeah.
Should we cover?
No, you have to do both.
We have to do both.
May I move to approve resolution? May I move to approve resolution number 2014 dash 06?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Colleen. Uh, any more discussion with this? Uh, Roderick?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
You, okay. Okay, adoption of ordinance 04, 2014, rescinding and recreating chapter 70 offenses and miscellaneous provision, article one, in general section 70 dash four, discharge of weapons and section 70 dash five, carrying concealed weapons approval requested. And the chief has stepped up to the podium, so uh, you want to do an issue statement or mark, or just review for the folks on the TV or?
I, I definitely can. This item came up for vote. Last month's board meeting was sent back to public safety for review, uh, and I can allow the public safety chair to discuss, you know, any information that he may have received. But basically, what the ordinance, uh, or the resolution is trying to do is to amend the ordinance to bring us into compliance with state and federal, uh, state laws relating to the carrying of concealed weapons and uh, those types of matters related to the issue statement that you should have before you. I need to find.
Okay. Um, Mark, any?
Well, we had, we, uh, I, I wasn't here for the board meeting and there was discussion about not accepting what was proposed. We met at public safety and decided to stay with what was proposed. We didn't find enough reasons to change what was proposed. And so we're submitting it again. And at this point, I guess I'll be happy to ask any specific questions, but I'm not going to go over the logic of it again.
Well, uh, one question I had is uh, back when in 1990 or whatever in the codification, they changed, wow, it used to say firearms, and then they switched it to weapons, which included, you know?
Yes.
Bolts and arrows, Nerf guns, uh, you know, I mean, basically any, anything that fires a projectile by any means. And I'm curious as, you know, that the, my biggest objection is, is the fire, you know, why has it changed from firearm to weapons? Why was it changed, or do you, I mean, that's, that's what I would like to see changed.
Back in 1990?
You're the only one here that would have been wrong.
I have a hard time remembering last year alone back then. Uh, the, 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 the change in this ordinance stemmed from some statutory regulations changing at the state level. And in looking at this ordinance, which has been on the books for a long time, um, some of the nuances that didn't meet the board members' approval, we don't, and so our goal wasn't to go through this whole ordinance. It's been intact for quite some time. It hasn't been an issue in North Hudson. We feel it can be more of an issue if we change that language. And we didn't see why tinker with something that's been working for this long. It's, and we kept the, uh, it's, it's a matter of our professional opinion, enforcement of, of inappropriate use of some of these weapons is easier to enforce if there's an ordinance against it. We're not actively seeking it. We're not looking for ordinance violations. In fact, I think Mark can corroborate, we haven't even issued a citation in that regard, have we?
No, in the 15 years that I, and I actually ran a, a report through our records management system, in the 15 years that I've been here, we've never issued a citation for violation of this particular ordinance with relation to the firing of uh, missiles, projectiles, and those types of things. And to speak to your point, Stan, I, I did not research back to 1990 because again, we haven't had a lot of issues with that. The current ordinance actually says firearm, so I'm not sure where the word weapon came into play.
Uh, do you, well, uh, discharge and firearm, let's see, there was, well, discharge of weapons is the, is the, you know, the title of the, of 70 dash four is what I'm looking at.
So if we haven't issued a citation against it, why is it in the books? Is it needed?
I think that it is, like, cause I, unlike, if I, I can't tell you how many crimes weren't committed because a patrol officer patrolled down the street. I can tell you, we get, we get questions periodically from residents saying, can little Johnny go out in our backyard and set up his bow and arrow range, or go out and shoot his pellet gun? And, and we've been able to say, you know, listen, we have an ordinance that says you can't do that in an area where people live in confined spaces. Um, so I can't tell you how many times parents have said, sorry Johnny, can't do this here. We'll have to go out into Uncle Joe's house in the colony and, and do it out there. So I, I can't speak to specifics on that, but I know that parents, a lot of times, are happy to be able to hear, good, I can go home and tell him he's not going to be shooting in the backyard with his, you know, 1,200 feet per second pellet gun, or, you know, those types of issues.
I, I don't think it's a, I, I don't think it's a need for any, um, you know, I, I, I don't like ordinances anymore than anybody else does. In this particular case, we're dealing with a community and the, and the, and the effective public safety. And to neglect, to not have something in regard to the, in this direction, I think we, we felt we'd be remiss because it's, um, not everybody operates responsibly. And it gives us at least a mechanism to thwart activity by saying it's not allowed. And we're, we don't actively seek it. We don't like publicizing epitome, we're not, it's not a, it's, it's not a witch hunt for these things, but it gives us a mechanism for enforcement if we run into it.
Well, the state of Wisconsin recently found that we can, or in municipalities, you can, with proper permissions, shoot or hunt with a bow and arrow.
Yeah.
Now, are we, or if they're legal to do that and get the proper permissions, why wouldn't it be where they can discharge that bow and arrow at a target so that they're practicing to be able to effectively use that, uh, tool?
Well, isn't, isn't, uh, isn't some of the provisions in the ordinance, you can use the bow and arrow with, under certain conditions?
Just under the hunting restrictions or the hunting aspect of it. It wouldn't, it wouldn't allow for the practicing, if you will.
See, that's a.
So you could not put up, if you're practicing for bow season, you couldn't put up a bell in the backyard and?
Not according to the current language, right?
And that's.
I, I still personally think it's too restrictive. Right. Um, I, I think if we haven't enforced against it, then why do we need it in the books? You know, if, if we're in the business of parenting children in the district, that's a whole nother issue. You know, great, wonderful parents can say, please, can't do it, but there's got to be other means of.
Ironically, we do a lot of parenting for people and I realize that this is one way.
The condition we live in, unfortunately, we become less of a rural community each year. And the enforcement of things, and like Mark said, some of the things are a little more transparent. If a ticket isn't written, it doesn't mean something hasn't happened. And I, I, I personally felt, and I believe was the, the, the feeling of the committee is why tinker with it? It hasn't been an issue, um, up until now, and the, and the, and the, and the point of changing this ordinance was, was, was for some other reasons, not this one. So I, uh, I don't see any need to mess with it right now. If you want to address it in a year, if it's an issue, we can, but I don't see going backwards on it by, um, taking away some of this language.
And I've had, you know, people, residents ask me, he says, you mean I can't shoot my bow in town anymore?
Yeah, I've had the same question.
Well, isn't the, the.
On several occasions.
Probably just as many as parents ask you. Doesn't it say downward?
Yeah.
It doesn't say like you're out practicing and shooting forward, it's, um, it says if you're shooting downwards, right?
It's the target and what's beyond. Gary?
I, I think it's important to distinguish two different things you're talking about here. Number one, your current ordinance is in violation of state law. And therefore you don't have an ordinance that's effective, and you ought to fix it. And that's what the proposal is, the language that you're looking at now. And that isn't really a discretionary thing. You, you can either not have an ordinance because it's in conflict with state law, or you can fix it. And so that's the question. This other issue about is the ordinance perfect, or can we tweak it and change it? That's, that's really a separate issue. You can tweak it and still have it in compliance with state law, and that's a legitimate political issue here that you guys can debate and whatever. But I think it's important as soon as possible to get an ordinance that isn't in conflict with state law. And then you can tweak it any day you want after that.
How long have we been out of compliance with state law?
Well, whenever, I, I can't tell you when, Mark, when, when, when did the law change at state law?
And unfortunately, I don't want to come up with my issue statement. If you look at the issue statement, it lays out for you when each of the, the three changes occurred, uh, in law, I believe, starting in 2009 and then.
2009. So another month's probably not going to kill us.
Hopefully.
I, I, my position stands as it was last month, right? Mark, I've sent you some recommended changes on it, right? Maybe, albeit a little late, right? Fully acknowledge that I should have gotten it to you earlier. I think those changes, right, addresses at least half the board's issues, and then it puts us also in compliance with concealed carry. And fully respect your position.
Yeah, well, all we can do at public safety is, is give our recommendation to you guys. And, and if, you know, somebody, again, whether you attended or not, I'm not saying that's the reason for anything, but we have, we had a meeting, we went over the same things, and we didn't have any, uh, any, I think we're fairly convinced on where we're at, and given no specific direction to go in, other than that it didn't pass.
Yeah.
We, we stayed where we were at with it, and I'm, I'm, I'm fair, fairly firm in where I'm at with it right now for a number of reasons, uh, some of which I just assume not discuss too openly.
But as chair, you would also be open to recommendations.
I'm always open to anything, yes. But I'm just saying where we are coming, we're coming back, we didn't know what, what else to recommend, other than what we originally proposed. But given what, you know, things do change, I get that, but given, um, that the original intent was this ordinance change was to comply with some other matters addressing this issue, it hadn't been an issue in, in real life anywhere. But it did help on the enforcement end, which is what our, our charge is, is to, is, is under public safety.
To make normally law-abiding citizens.
Our, is, is public safety.
Well, I mean.
In general, in a community.
And I think in speaking somewhat to Stan's short point there, um, one of the things in looking at Ted's proposed language, it basically allows for the prohibition of discharge of a firearm, but then opens up and takes out any language related to air or gas propelled rifle or pistols, archery bows, slingshots, or other articles designed to propel any type of missile or projectile. And, and doing some, you know, very limited research today, understanding that the bullets that we shoot travel at 1,000 feet per second, and that there are air guns that will shoot up to 1,300 per second. Uh, you've got 22s that will shoot at 2,200 feet per second and could travel to Stillwater. I think my argument, uh, for the public safety side of it is, is we're in a very confined space with a lot of these, these areas. There was no reference to the age of the person that would be firing these potential weapons, and so if we're, if we're looking at getting to the nitty gritty and narrowing it down, I think there has to be much more information on exactly what we're talking about making changes to.
We have apartment buildings, we have, uh, a lot of areas that don't have a lot of space. And to open that up would be, um, I think going backwards.
Well, it hasn't been an issue ever.
I know that in, in the language in there helps us, it helps, no, but it helps keep it less of an issue for us.
I don't, I don't know if I agree with that.
Well, listen, at this point, I, we have to take, we have, uh, our own police partner, our chief, we work with his recommendations too. He's out there, he handles this sort of stuff.
Yeah.
Our exposure, every one of our, as a board member, is a limited exposure to what goes on. Unless you're going to ride around with these guys and know everything that's going on, we don't get, their activity is different than what you might expect. So we have to take, we have to give some weight to his recommendations on these things. To, to dismiss it entirely is a bit presumptuous.
It's not being dismissed entirely, it's being changed.
It's virtually dismissing, it's the same thing.
Well, I, I think we just need to get it in compliance with the state. Just because we haven't done it, I don't see any reason to prolong it another month, um, because we need to be in compliance with the state, and we haven't been. And Mark, the chief noticed that, wanted to get us into compliance, and so that was the purpose of this change.
Well, um, I can see that we are pretty much, I don't know, Daryl, you got anything to say today?
No, I.
We've went through.
Amendmentary inquiry, is there a motion on the table, or are we discussing this without a motion? I don't think we've got a motion on the table, do we? I was going to move the previous question, then realized there wasn't one.
Okay. Sorry about that.
I'll move then to amend ordinance 70 dash four and 70 dash five as written in ordinance 04 slash 2014.
Second.
Okay, now we can have the discussion we just had, or we can?
Mr. President, I move the previous question.
Call the vote?
Right.
Um, Ted?
No.
Yes.
No?
Yes.
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 Motion to amend adoption of ordinance 2014 is passed. Number eight, new business from the board or staff, president's comments. Well, as everyone can see, uh, we, the Pepper Festival shirt is to remind everyone that in 10 days, Pepper Festival is, is the opening day. Setup starts, uh, Sunday at noon. If so, if anyone is interested in helping with the setup, uh, meet here at Pepper Festival Park. They can always use another pair of hands. It's, it's a, it's a lot of work and a lot of folks get involved, it's a lot of fun. Uh, and if you need more information for contact, to contact, uh, Ryan Copeland to help with any questions or volunteer, his phone number is 715-220-5424. That's all I have. Hope you have a safe Pepper Fest. All right?
Well, I'm wondering if, uh, Mark, if you would mind updating the residents on the project on Sixth Street, where they're at and timing, or, we appreciate everyone's patience with, uh.
Uh, right now, the current plan is that, uh, before, actually the Friday before Pepper Fest, uh, Q3 contracting, who was contracted for Exile Energy will have the new gas mains in, and all the services hooked to new gas mains from Monroe Street, um, south to Wisconsin Street. They will also have those sidewalks put back in place. Any sidewalk panels that are not in place will be, uh, gravel will be placed to level out the sidewalks, that gravel will be compacted. All, we've discussed that all dirt and anything else has to be put back, make sure there ain't no holes or anything else, uh, on, from Michaelson Street to. Mickelson Street to, I'm sorry, from Monroe Street to Mickelson Street, they're only working on the west side of the street until after Pepper Fest. Uh, there will be some of the panels there that will not be reinstalled until after Pepper Fest. Those will also be, uh, they'll be gravel placed. Make sure everybody has access, you know, up and down that sidewalk. Uh, basically at noon on that Friday, they will make sure all the traffic barricades, uh, cones, everything else is moved to the shopyards, is what we discussed. That way, none of that will be around during the parade or anything like that. The project will continue again the Tuesday after Pepper Fest. They will continue to, uh, Summer Street where the project ends. Right now, their timetable is to be, uh, hopefully they're looking at being out of here by the end of September.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Melissa, have anything else?
A reminder that the partisan primary election is next Tuesday, August twelfth, and polls will be open from seven AM to eight o'clock noon.
Okay, next, Plan Commission. I don't believe Plan Commission met. Number ten, Personnel and Finance Committee recommendations. Claims and approvals requested.
Stan, can I move, may I move to approve the July two thousand fourteen non-recurring claims totaling sixty-eight thousand six hundred and one dollars and twenty cents, please?
Is there a second?
No second.
Good. Um, let's see any discussion. Spending. Roderick? Claims approval?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Item B, telephone contract renewal approval requested.
Stan, may I recommend that the village, that we approve that the village administrator be authorized to negotiate and sign the renewal of a three-year telephone contract with the state of Wisconsin and the SBC Global Services, Inc.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Lean against, uh, first, uh, any further discussion? Uh, let's see, it's a contract negotiation. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here it is. Item C, trustee handbook approval requested.
Stan, may I move to approve the, uh, employee handbook?
Trustee.
Uh, the trustee handbook, I'm sorry.
Trustee handbook, okay. That's a guideline for new, for new, uh-
Any trustee.
Any trustee. Yeah, that's, that's true. I learned a lot.
Even neighboring communities.
I learned a lot. Okay, uh, let's see, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion?
I'd just like to compliment the people that worked on it. I, I thought it was well put together. Those of us that have been around a while, there's still a lot of new information and good information in there. And I think it's very beneficial. So my congratulations to those that worked on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I will review the section on parliamentary procedure, Gerald, so that I get that question thing again.
I'm looking forward to reading it.
Well, I need to be a little careful. Gary's colleague last month kind of spanked me and said that this board doesn't always follow parliamentary procedure. So maybe I should cool my jets, so.
Oh, no, that's, it's a, it's a good guideline rather than a rule. Okay. Uh, next on the agenda, let's see, purchase installation of mobile video system MBS for police squads approval requested.
I can- Stan, may I move to approve the purchase and installation of three digital ally DVM dash eight hundred mobile video systems at a cost not to exceed thirteen thousand?
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
No second.
By the way, all these motions had been approved at finance beforehand. So like, it seems like there isn't much discussion. They've been discussed before.
Roderick, uh, is there any discussion? Any questions for the chief? This is to replace out of date, you know, cameras that we need software that are upgraded. So, uh, uh, thanks, chief, for-
Thank you.
Standing up to answer none. That's a good thing. Uh, no further discussion. Ted?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, approval. Let's see, and, uh, letter E, amend two thousand fourteen budget approval requested.
Stan, may I move to authorize village administrator to transfer thirteen thousand from the unassigned funds account to the public safety capital dash vehicles account to cover purchase of police squad mobile video equipment and amend the two thousand fourteen budget?
Thank you, Mark. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Roderick. Uh, further discussion? This is also came down from finance. So, uh, that's, uh, budget spending type. Roderick?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Number eleven, uh, Public Works Committee Chair update?
Mr. President, Public Works did meet, although I was not there for the meeting. Stan will, or, uh, I'm sorry, Daryl will fill, Daryl will fill the, fill in for me.
We did, uh, discuss a number of agenda items and we do have some, uh, recommended motions for the full board to consider tonight. First of all, there is one piece of information that is simply for review and there was no action on this, but we want to bring you up to date on the East Bank project situation. As you know, we did let bids for that project. Unfortunately, we only received two bids and one of the bids, when they were open, turned out not to be in compliance with the specifications, which left us with only one bid. We were uncomfortable, um, with that one bid for two reasons. One, it exceeded, um, by a fair percentage, the estimate from Cedar Corporation and what the project should entail. And since we're looking at the likelihood of some, uh, street situations that would enable us to have a bigger project to bid upon, uh, next year, at, at least in conjunction with the mobilization of equipment, um, our recommendation is that we, um, decline to proceed with that project, not rebid it. We, we've already turned this bid down, not rebid it and slide it into next year. And that's, that's our recommendation. Uh, do you want to add anything to that, Kevin? I think that's, that's where we're at. Uh, the folks at East Bank understand this. They're, they're okay with it. Um, and as it turns out, it also works with what they're going to do too, because we thought they were going to be surfacing their parking lot this year. It turns out they're not going to do it till next year. So it, it, it all works out good.
Very good. That sounds great.
Moving to a couple of other situations, um, we continue to have repair requirements for our infrastructure projects in the village. The first situation is a storm sewer situation, a sinkhole that has developed in front of five nineteen Fourth Street. Um, the funding for this would come out of our, uh, storm sewer maintenance fund. And, Mr. President, I would move that we engage Zappa Brothers to repair the storm sewer in front of five nineteen Fourth Street North at a cost not to exceed forty-nine sixty-five. And also recommend having Zappa Brothers rebuild the catch basin at Helen Street and Riverside at a cost not to exceed thirty-nine seventy-five.
Thank you. Is there a second?
No second.
Thank you, Ted. Further discussion? Okay, it's a spending. Was it Ted?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, unanimous, thank you. Uh-
Then eleven D. This item is also in infrastructure. This is a sanitary sewer manhole. This is in front of eleven fifty-two Riverside Drive North. This is starting to collapse because of some deterioration. Funding for this would come out of the two oh one sanitary sewer maintenance fund. So, Mr. President, approved by Public Works, and I move here for the board, uh, I move that Zappa Brothers, Inc., repair the sanitary sewer manhole in front of eleven fifty-two Riverside Drive North at a cost not to exceed one thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars.
No second.
Thank you, Daryl. Thank you, Ted. Uh, any further discussion? Spending again, Roderick?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes. And then eleven C.
E.
E.
Uh, is done. Eleven D, we're done. And so we're up to eleven E. This involves some Watergate valve boxes. There are eight of them that need to be repaired. Cost of this would come out of the two twenty water maintenance fund. Um, we, we approved this in, in Public Works. What we did not approve, and I'm not questioning it, I'm just wondering, and I read this earlier, so this is out loud, but I, here's what I was wondering when I was getting ready for the meeting, um, amending the twenty fourteen budget. Why would we need to amend the budget if it's coming out of the water maintenance fund?
Because we budget out of that fund and there's not enough budgeted for that. So anytime you spend more than what you've budgeted, you have to amend the budget. Um, I believe that had to, related to the money that was spent for Keystone.
Yeah.
For that.
Okay.
Because add them two together.
Okay, forget all that sidebar. I just was curious about it. All right, then, Mr. President, I recommend having Zappa Brothers, or I would move to have Zappa Brothers, Inc. repair the eight gate valve boxes that are listed above. The specific addresses are here on your issue sheet, at a cost not to exceed eleven thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and to authorize the village administrator to amend the twenty fourteen budget to cover these costs.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mark. Any further discussion?
Watergate.
Watergate. Gate valves, not water.
I'm sorry.
Ted?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 You?
Couple of things for, uh, the review, not necessarily to take the time to do it now, but we commend to your review. In fact, I think it might be beneficial, Kevin, to have you, uh, step forward just a minute. We spent some time looking at the five-year capital improvement plan and the five-year street maintenance plan. There are two different pieces of documentation that are in here. The discussion that we had at Public Works and the recommendation that we're putting in front of the board for information purposes is what is contained in the packet. Essentially, we recognize that the two streets that are in most desperate need of repair and resurfacing in the village are Pine Street, uh, the Pine Street and Lemon Street project, which you would see on this map in green. You will also notice in green then, that little piece over here that's East Bank, and that's what I earlier said, East Bank would be slid until next year. And if this is approved, it would be a larger project and potentially resulting in some better bids. But Kevin, uh, as we asked you, uh, to have for board consideration, some firmer numbers, you've got them now. Um, as we anticipated, they're, they're big, but that's what streets cost. So why don't you just quickly walk through this for the board? There's no action on this that I'm aware of, but this is, um, this is looking down the road at what we see coming at us as far as our streets are concerned.
Okay. Thank you, Daryl. So basically, yeah, I put together a preliminary cost estimate, um, broke it up into two sections, um, Pine Street, uh, which would basically be from Seventh to Lemon, all the way, um, up to the end there. Remember, we, it's part of the two thousand two project, came around the corner, we put some curb and gutter and some water main up to a point. So as part of this particular project, we would replace the water main in that area. I mean, it's, it's fairly old. Um, we'd be putting in a new eight-inch main. Um, basically be looking at doing looping out there to tie onto that new main that was put in, in two thousand two. It would be a total reconstruct. Um, this considers, uh, you actually putting in what you can, what would be a urban scenario, curb and gutter, storm sewer. It is somewhat of a rural. That's something that we would have to discuss at Public Works and see if, you know, if that was, be what you would want to proceed with. But this is kind of a standard reconstruct, um, between sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, and street reconstruction. It's roughly about a thousand feet. The street itself would be, is pretty, pretty narrow right of way up there. Um, as you imagine, there's quite a few trees and things. So we were looking at just doing a twenty-four foot wide, um, probably no parking on both sides. And that particular stretch, as you can imagine, is somewhat expensive. So came in right around three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for that. Uh, as part of the, um, Seventh Street project, the sanitary sewer, when that street was redone, the sewer in that area was lowered for anticipation of Lakeview Drive. There are some parcels that are on along the south side that are on well and septic. So anticipation of the lem, uh, Lakeview Drive, they lowered the sewer in Seventh so we could get gravity sewer to serve those parcels that are on the south side of Lakeview Drive. So that particular stretch, it's about eight hundred and fifty feet, fairly narrow right of way again. Um, quite a few trees in that area. We were looking at twenty-four foot wide. No sidewalks for both stretches. And for that particular area, we were looking around two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So when you combine the two of them, um, it would be around a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. So.
And that, you're projecting this for what, next year?
Yeah. Next year.
We've got it, we've got it in the, in the plan for next year only because those are our two worst streets. That doesn't mean we're going to do them next year, but they are the two next streets that we, we need to address at whatever point we address them.
Yeah, they, they are the lowest one rated and within the village.
As you recall, we've had difficulty even snow plowing Lakeview Drive because of the condition of the road.
Like a rustic road sign.
Well, we can't put signs up in the village. We've already-
Not out on the, on the main drag.
Just so I can add something. Uh, reason that Public Works would talk about this, you might want to consider doing this project next year or the following year, so you can allow these accounts to build back up. Because if you're, you look at that, uh, potential Sixth Street project, they're going to need to have those accounts built back up for that very large project.
That's probably around twenty twenty.
And I think, like, you drive has been on the list since before I-
Well, it's just, uh, this is a, I would find things better to lose.
So we just wanted to lay that in front of you, uh, so that you can see that we've got a couple of big sticks above the water that are not going to improve as time goes by and need to be addressed at some point. So to answer your question, we're just putting them in front of the, the-
Oh, that's, I mean, that, that's, I just, you know, wanted to clarify timelines to the folks at home. Okay.
Then the other item is the five-year street maintenance plan. And, uh, this again is a document for your review. We spent some time looking at the recommendation as far as seal coating, uh, the, the streets and identifying based on conditions and PESA ratings, what that, um, would look like in terms of recommending by year. So at this point, this is simply a working document, a five-year street maintenance plan. If we were going to work through these streets in that period of time, this would be the year that we would realistically look at attempting to do those, assuming, um, budget considerations and budget constraints.
Thank you, Daryl.
I'd like to add, Mark, nice job on this. This is great. This will come in very handy for budgeting purposes.
Okay, next item, public safety.
I have nothing further to update. Uh, the two big items were the video and that, that ordinance. Um, I would like to, um, extend an invitation to any of the board members or anybody in the public for that matter, who, with this ordinance, that, the part we didn't change- with this ordinance, that, the part we didn't change, the verbiage, would like to attend to a meeting, we can put it on the agenda again and address it in a diff- from in a less, uh, separate from our, our primary objective of getting in compliance with the state or some other ordinance, um, wording. So, um, it doesn't necessarily have to be a dead issue, but I, I would prefer if we did it at a, a public safety meeting. And so, you know, just somebody, if, let me know, or tell Lori, we can put it on the agenda and, and address it again. If I seem short, I'm, I'm sorry, but I mean, after the second go-around and without much feedback, we just wanted to get.
Mark, you never seem short.
Thank you. Well, anyway.
That meeting is when?
Public Safety?
Yes.
The next one? Mark?
The next one's next Thursday, but it's not, we have to make that change.
Yeah, maybe a little early. We got, Pepperfest is gonna be in the back room too. But, um, it doesn't, so just maybe down the line sometime this fall and take a look at it if anybody's inclined.
Thank you. Uh, Public Welfare Committee did not meet, I don't think, today. But, uh, or when?
No.
They did not meet. Park Board, uh.
We did meet.
Next.
A few things and a couple of dates. Um, one, the only one, main one, we have the warming house roof in Pepperfest Park is in need of repair. So we recommend removal, repair, installation of the warming house roof in Pepperfest Park for the amount not to exceed seven hundred dollars in the park maintenance funds to be used.
Second.
And this was recommended through, through Finance and was approved in Finance, so I just thought I'd clarify that. And, uh, is there any further discussion? Uh, the spending issue. Rodrick?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
In your additional information that Melissa sent out, there was just a, the draft for the St. Croix Bike Pedestrian Coalition bylaws. And basically what the coalition is, is doing is trying to become a more formal organization and have bylaws and board of directors and that. So they've drafted a, some bylaws and were just, um, requesting any comments or issues that the villages or the municipalities might have. And if there are any, you can just email them to me and I will pass them along to the coalition.
Thank you.
And then also on that note, the, um, bike ride that was, um, part of River Fest and to go from Hudson to the New River Crossing. There were around thirty people who took the ride, um, and it seemed to be well, um, pretty well attended for, it was mostly for information, um, to update people on the coalition and the possibility of extending the, the loop trail that's with the bridge, um, to go into North Hudson and Hudson. And eventually, you know, the, you know, beyond into St. Croix County. And, you know, we talked a little bit about the poss-, you know, with the, um, railroad property, which, you know, in the long-term future, which would be, you know, the ideal route for crossing instead of Sixth Street. And Jean Haberman from East Bank came to watch the riders, and he said, you know, that the people of East Bank are willing to work with the village if that railroad property ever becomes available. You know, and their, you know, main issue was just, you know, they would, like, privacy maintained by, you know, trees or that sort of thing. And so, you know, if when, if and when that ever becomes a possibility, uh, that would be, you know, a great asset to the, to the village and getting from Hudson, you know, to the New River Crossing, which we realized could take a while, but something to keep in mind. And then the welcome to North Hudson sign, we do finally have a place for the one on the south end. The manager of, um, the Willow River Apartments said we can install a sign on their property. And Mark, you know, contacted Cedar, or not Cedar, um, St. Croix Tree Service that will take down the trees, um, and they were kind of glad to get rid of some of the trees because they're kind of nuisance trees anyway, and we'll do a little landscaping around that, and the plan is to hopefully have that sign in before Pepperfest. Is that still gonna work, Mark?
I haven't seen the trees yet.
Yeah. I did see them marked though. Um, and we're still working on getting the one at the south end, but, you know, one, getting one in is good, finally. And, um, Park Board will not be meeting in August.
Really? Why?
We don't want any of Pepperfest.
Uh, that's it?
That's it. Oh, actually, River Fest cleanup, we did have, um, four people help clean up Ferry Landing Park and, and Browns Beach, and surprisingly, it was pretty well, there was not a lot of garbage, um, and which was, you know, does show that people are taking care of the parks. And then also, um, a group from Wells Fargo, um, cleaned up around the dam. Now that's all.
Okay.
Mr. President, I got one quick question for Mark, and I think maybe parks related. If you're going west on Grad Lake to thirty-five stop sign, how can, is that the township of Troy where those trees are up in the east end?
Actually, that'd be, uh, State right away.
Is it? How do we get those trimmed?
I'm gonna try and deal with the, the state and the county because there are a bunch of downed trees, uh, right at, just in the area of the State Highway right in North.
Cause that forty.
Trees in there, and the state basically has told the county is, they're not gonna pay the county to do it, and the county told me that they're not gonna come and do it, I'll say, damn. So basically, I'm at the point where I'm gonna big crush his department and we're gonna come up and stand on the truck here.
Well, yeah.
Tired of dealing with this, and the dealing with this thing's been going around for about two and a half, three years now.
At forty, those trees are only getting bigger too. Forty-five miles an hour. Hopefully they're going forty-five, but that comes up quick, cause you look, they're not there, and you look, they're, they're halfway through yet. That's like a.
All needs to be trimmed up there. It's like, you know, they expect us to have to put a sign in there right away. They can't take care of it.
So during a storm, those branches come down?
Right now, they'll come down, we pick them up because we're going, basically, by the time this winter is coming in, three, the landowners, I would say, right away, they're landing on these kind of property, you have to walk in.
That's the only way they're gonna. So the state's not gonna do anything about it?
No, they haven't cut there for years.
They're gonna wash their hands of it.
Yep.
So like I said, next big storm comes through, they're gonna, branches will be down.
Well, then we'll have the, uh.
I know one way to get them up here. Just put a sign out there right away. They call me regularly. I got, I have your number, I speed dial.
Okay, sorry.
All right, um, next item on the agenda is the appeal of operators license denial for Brenda Johnson. Discussion, possible approval. Brenda is here, and, uh, we, uh, folks, uh, everybody has their packet, uh, everybody is, uh, Brenda wrote us a note, and, uh, if you had, uh, care to step up there, uh, for our policy, uh, the chief reviews renewals, and if they haven't met all the, or if they've had a violation of some sort, uh, it is part of the policy to deny, but it is also part of the board's purview to be able to review the, uh, denial and possibly recommend that it would be approved. So, uh, Brenda, uh, I'm sure you're plenty nervous at your.
I am very nervous.
And, uh, and if you would just, uh, you know, I mean, uh, I don't know.
Let me start with a question, please. How, how, have you, how long have you worked Village Inn?
Um, it'll be five years in September.
Okay. The infraction was recently?
It was two years ago.
Okay.
Nothing since.
Nothing since, no. It has definitely changed my whole life, so.
Chief, is that the extent of the, that was, what infraction on the, um, I'm going to, uh, is there, uh, was Lee gonna come down, or he couldn't make it?
He was, um, he couldn't make it tonight.
Okay. He obviously endorses this, and you're.
Definitely.
You're still employed there?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to, uh, I would like to move that, how do, how do I phrase that, to allow her to have her license be remove, renewed.
Grant the license, huh?
Yes, I would like to move to grant Brenda Johnson her, um, uh, operator's license. Operator's license.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ted. Any further discussion?
Um, yes, and this is generic. This is not specific to you. I don't recall the number of, um, appeals that have come to the board during the time that I've been here. Um, a handful at least have come. And I don't recall an appeal, I may be wrong, but I don't recall an appeal that ever came here that we didn't grant. In effect, they apply, the chief does his job, completes the application, and for specific and statutory reasons denies it. Then the appeal comes here, and we somewhat automatically overturn it and grant the license. That process just seems somewhat cumbersome to me. If, if, if we're just automatically gonna grant the appeals, why, why do we go through the process?
We can have public safety for October. We can talk about it with the guns.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There have been appeals that were, uh, denied. As a matter of fact, there was a Village Inn employee, uh, several years ago where the violation was, uh, sale, multiple sales to minors. There were two violations and this board, and you may not have been sitting on the board at the time, but did continue with the denial, uh, based on that information. So of denials, denials that have come forward, very few of them have been continued, but I think looking back at the resolution and the way in two thousand and five it was put into place was to allow those that have no blemishes on their record to go through with no problems. But to bring forward those people that had, uh, within those three years, or some of the other issues that are listed on there, giving them basically an extra step. I mean, it's, it's pretty important, those people that have an operator's license to be able to serve alcohol. We want them to be upstanding people that make good decisions, and I think if they make a, if they have a fault that falls into place, obviously, it's nothing personal by any means, but it gives them that opportunity to come in and explain to the board, listen, I made a mistake, and therefore I really would like to continue with my employment under the operator's license. So it may seem, at least to my opinion, it may seem like it's kind of an extra hoop, and, and I think it's an appropriate one for them to, for this board, and, and, and at some point you may say, you know, listen, this is just too grievous for me to continue forward. It helps me in my position to have that, uh, step, because then there's no mis- misunderstanding that it's personal. I mean, I don't know Brenda from Adam, but, uh, you know, if I did, say she were my second cousin, and I let her go through with X, Y, or Z violation, but I don't let the next person that comes through with the exact same circumstances. It's nice for me to be able to get, take, get it to the board and let the seven of you make the decision versus one of me based on that. So I don't know if that helps with.
The other, the other thing is, we don't know how many people have, um, have not applied because they know they have an infraction. And as we've seen, Brad's here tonight, Lee would have been here, um, but the employer has come out, and as I, I've said many times, they're the ones with something on the line, the licenses that are in their name, their, their, uh, their liquor licenses and that, and if they're endorsing, endorsing their staff, I don't have a problem if somebody's willing to come, admit that they made a mistake, and are gonna continue on, we can only hope for the best, so. That's why, I know it seems like kind of a weird thing, but I think Mark explained it pretty well, and as I said, we don't know how many people don't apply.
Well, it has to be a pretty hard step for you to come here tonight and appeal.
It is.
So I respect that greatly. I just don't want it to appear, Mark. Here's my, my primary point. I don't want it to appear to the public that the chief is doing what the chief is supposed to do, but then the board just overturns it somewhat perfunctorily. So as long as we're not creating that appearance, and like I say, if that was not a personal discussion, in fact, I'm gonna support the motion.
Nothing else, Darrell, it's just an appearance. I mean, I, I, so, if somebody.
Okay, that's enough.
So we have a, a motion?
Is there a second?
There was a second.
And a second, and, uh, any further discussion? So all in favor of granting, uh, the operator's license renewal for, uh, Brenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you all for your time.
And please. Good luck. Uh, okay, next, uh, item on the agenda, appeal operator's license denial. Amy Preston, discussion possible. Approval, Amy is here as is her employer, Brad. This is a little. Yep, right. An operating, illegal substance, it is, uh, it's a, several years ago, I believe.
Um, no, this happened last year.
Oh, last year, okay.
Um, I did get misdemeanor charges, um, so I'm not sure what information you were provided with, but I have, um, I did not get arrested. I know that it said in my statement that I did, so that's a positive thing, but, um, out of the four charges, I am entered into a diversion program through the St. Croix County DA's office, and after twelve months, if all of those, well, obviously if I behave myself and I'm in a treatment program right now, and if all the char-, you know, if I behave for twelve months, all the charges will be dropped. So then I won't, won't get any of them. And I have proof of the deferment program right now.
So you're in the program, you've not completed it yet?
Yep. That actually just wrapped up in court in June.
Okay.
After the date of my meld.
Yeah, it came within like a couple days, so.
So that's why it's not reflected in my meld.
Get a motion for, I mean, is there any, I mean, other questions for Amy, or?
I've worked at Seasons, it'll be three years, November. Worked in the city of Hudson for ten years prior to that, never had an issue with liquor license or serving or selling to minors or anything, so.
No, and I might add that, uh, the, uh, but the substance is being legalized across the country as we speak. Many different venues, and Wisconsin hasn't quite caught up to that yet, but, uh.
Can I move to grant Amy's operator's license, please? May I?
You may. Does it, does somebody like to make a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Rodrick. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all in favor of renewing Amy's operator's license so that she can continue to be a taxpayer for this city, county, state, uh, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you, you guys.
Thanks, Brad, for taking the time to show up. Appreciate it.
You'd rather be cooking, I'm sure, but, uh.
No, this is important.
This is important. No, I appreciate you coming and.
It's interesting to see a meeting, you're on. It's very interesting to see a meeting.
Oh, stop.
Oh, don't.
Stop, and we've already.
We already approved it. You don't need to. Who are you?
Okay, uh.
You can watch us on TV every month.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we have a Best of CD coming out too.
The outtakes.
Okay, and now that we're having so much fun, I'm gonna eliminate number seventeen and number eighteen from, uh, the agenda, and that leaves just number nineteen. Mark?
Move to adjourn, Stan, every day.
Thank you. I appreciate that. You may do so. Meeting is adjourned at. I appreciate that. You may do so. This meeting is adjourned at eight ten.